Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It is May the 21st and Councilmember Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge. And I think you have someone you want to introduce.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Christopher Curtis, would you come to the podium, please? Christopher is going to give us our, right here, right here. Christopher's going to give us our pledge, I mean, our pledge tonight, but before pray, I just want to recognize Christopher for his accomplishments here in our city. Christopher is getting ready to leave to go to West Point at the end of June, but Christopher also is an Eagle Scout. He's a three-year letterman at Riverdale, but he's also what really stands out, he's the valedictorian of his class year this year with a 4.0, on a 4.0 scale. So I just wanted to recognize him today while we have him here in our council.
Outstanding.
All right, let's bow our head and let's pray. Father of heaven, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for all you're doing. We just ask you to bless our country, bless Murfreesboro, bless all that we do. We're going through difficult times, Lord, but we know you're a God that says, don't live by fear, just live by faith. Lord, we just thank you for what you're doing. Bless everybody, bless our service providers, and bless us every, one by one, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, could you stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Hey, I do think it's fitting with Christopher here and your family that, I think it's fitting that we have a student who is going to West Point, that's valedictorian, that we also lost a community leader and someone who always put students first. Yesterday with the passing of Dr. Linda Gilbert, we want to let the Gilbert family know that they are in our thoughts and our prayers. Sherry, I know all of our teachers are hurting right now and she will not be easily replaced. She is someone that will leave a lasting legacy in this community, not just by the things and the buildings that were built, but by the many lives that she touched and the leaders that she has cultivated that will be carrying our school system on for the many years to come. So, Dr. Gilbert, we are appreciative of you and you will absolutely be missed. Okay, let's move to our consent agenda.
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into old business. We have ordinance 20OZ08 to amend the Old Fort Plaza PUD on approximately 5.4 acres located along Old Fort Parkway and Autumn Town Way.
I'll move. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 20OZ09 to rezone approximately .36 acres located at the northwest corner of East Vine Street and South Bilbro Avenue.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 20OZ10 to rezone approximately 2.42 acres located along East College Street, North Church Street, East Loud Street, and North Spring Street.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into ordinance 20OZ11, the annexation and zoning of approximately 26.8 acres and 27.9 acres respectively, located along New Salem Highway and Barfield Road. This is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 20OZ12 to amend the zoning ordinance regarding the definitions of yard timeframes for planning commission review of zoning applications, outdoor storage, and displays, and several other miscellaneous changes.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into new business and we have resolution 20R10, unclaimed property request.
Mayor, this is something we do each year. The state allows the city to take back property that we turned in as unclaimed property after a period of time has not been claimed. We do take responsibility for turning over those funds if someone later comes along to claim them.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 20O15, this is a budget amendment.
This is a budget amendment. We do this each year towards the end of the year to kind of make sure we're covering our bases. There'll be a lot of payables that'll come in at the end of the year, and while the budget is cash basis, our audit report is not, so we try to make sure that we look good for both directions. So the first one is a community development budget amendment because they got some new COVID-19 money. They can't spend that until we budget it. The insurance fund and the risk management fund requested amendments are for claims that may come in. Some have come in, some settlements have been done recently on each of those that have pushed up our expenses a little bit. I don't expect to necessarily spend this amount of money, it's just to make sure we're covered. Debt service, we are hoping to pay off by refinancing our 2008 bonds, and we cannot spend that money to send the payoff without budgeting to do that, so that's what that one is for. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 20O16, amendment to the city ordinance permitting regulated takeout and delivery of beer.
This ordinance came about because of the recent challenges that many small businesses had with COVID-19. One of the requests were because ABC allowed restaurants who have an ABC permit, which means they have beer and liquor by the drink, to have delivery. We did the same thing for our beer locations that do not have anything except beer, because they are not cleared by ABC. It was suggested after the emergency orders expired that we continue this ability for these locations. The legal department took a look at this and Mr. Tucker wrote up, along with input from several others, as to how this could be worded to allow this to continue, so we're bringing this before you to decide if this is something you want to continue.
I asked Mr. Tucker when, you know, we went through and what we're continuing to go through, had met with several small business owners who had asked us that when that was suspended, that we make that permanent just because of there's so much uncertainty moving forward and, you know, we've not had any complaints that I've seen or that we've seen that has been an issue for someone being able to go to Toots and get, take home beer and some wings, and it's consistent with what the governor has sent. So we were just trying to find a way to help any of our businesses to be able to provide that.
I know the legal department did try to pattern their changes to be along with what ABC has already in their ordinance for the ability for delivery, and Adam may have more to add to that, but I do know that's the research they did was to try to pattern that.
Well, this is, we don't have jurisdiction over liquor by the drink.
Right.
We only have jurisdiction over beer, so this has nothing to do with liquor by the drink. That'll have to come from the state.
No. He was just trying to use that.
Yeah, yeah.
The reason being, you may be a consumer who buys from someone who has both, and you may be a consumer who next time wants to buy from somebody who only has beer.
Sure.
So we didn't really want different rules so that it would confuse the person who is ordering.
I just wanted to make it aware that, you know, this is just for beer.
Correct.
If someone wants to get fajitas and a margarita, we don't have the ability to be able to do that. That will have to come from the state, which I do think that's going to end up coming from the state that...
And it's only for locations who only have beer.
Correct.
If they do have margaritas, they're not under this.
Right.
It's only if you have beer only.
Yep.
And I think this is a good thing for clarification, if nothing else. It's a good thing for clarification. Did the, is, what has changed, just from my knowledge, as far as who gets ID'd when Grubhub shows up to pick up wings and beer to deliver it to a house, and who's responsible for checking the ID? Of course, I'm sure they're going to check the Grubhub guy's ID, but when he delivers it to the house, is the Grubhub guy then responsible for checking the ID of the person he's actually handing it to?
To my knowledge. That is the way ours is written. If you get, if you're the deliverer and you get there and the person you're delivering to does not have a valid ID, then you don't, you don't sell to them, you don't deliver to them, and they don't get their delivery feedback.
Okay.
Mayor, I had, I had one question, and I called Mr. Tucker about this. In section B of the ordinance where it talks about, it must be contained in a metal can or glass bottle with a secure lid or cap. Some of the restaurants were selling beer in milk jugs that had plastic caps that were sealed, and in some of the discussion I had, you know, they felt like that was a more sanitary and a better product to send out, so I don't know if we can consider adding plastic containers if we're concerned about it being sealed or if we're concerned about the container that it's being in. Just, just one suggestion.
Mr. Martin and members of council, this is Adam Tucker. I talked with Mr. Martin about this proposed change, and it's certainly something that we can bring back on second reading if that's something that council would like.
I think that sounds fair. I mean, I think that's what Toots is, Toots is doing, so...
That's right.
But they would not be covered under this.
Right.
Because they sell both.
Right.
Because they sell both.
Right.
All right, any questions?
This would be on first reading, so if there are other, are other changes to be added, they could be done before second reading.
I'll move for approval.
Motion is second. Oh, excuse me, motion.
Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Wade and Mr. Martin. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, well now, thank you, Ms. Wright. We now have land, and I want to say publicly, Ms. Wright and I have gone back and forth on, you would not believe the amount of people who were, well, you would believe the amount of people who were confused on some of the orders that were coming across, so Ms. Wright has been available. I know one Saturday I called her from the office at like 1:00 in the afternoon when a business, local business had a question. Mr. Tucker is the same way, so thank you for being available and all the questions that you've been able to answer, so appreciate it very much. All right, we'll move to land use matters. Annexation and plan of services of approximately 190 linear feet or .22 acres of Anell Drive right-of-way planning. Mr. Bombley.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. This annexation is somewhat of a cleanup annexation. We annexed the property directly to the west of this right-of-way that we're considering about a year and a half, two years ago, 1.3 acres at the southwest corner of Joby Jackson Parkway and Anell Drive. We did not annex the right-of-way of Anell Drive at the same time that we annexed that parcel. Since that time, we fielded several requests for, or several inquiries about the development of that parcel, and right now it's currently zoned RS15, and it could yield up to three single-family residential lots. We would want any new driveways to come in off of Anell Drive as opposed to coming in off of, as well, as opposed to creating new driveways off of Joby Jackson Parkway. So for several reasons, we have brought this, or staff actually requested this annexation or began studying it. One, for whoever develops that property, if indeed it is developed at some point in the future, the review authority for that will all lie within one jurisdiction. It will all lie within the city's jurisdiction as opposed to the developer having to submit plans to both the city and to the county highway department for any driveway connections. And then two, our engineering department would review the driveway connections for compliance with city standards as opposed to whatever standards the county may have. So it basically just consolidates the jurisdictions for whenever this parcel develops. We do have a plan of services contained in the, in the agenda packet. It shows that it's a very short piece of right-of-way, 190 feet in length. It'll be a relatively easy annexation to effect. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter in early January, and they deferred action, not because, not because they think they had any fundamental opposition to it, but because we were awaiting consent to annex from the county road board. County road board then subsequently approved consent to annex the right-of-way, and then at the February 5th meeting, the planning commission took this up under old business and then voted to recommend approval of this annexation. We'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bombley? All right, thank you, Mr. Bombley. Okay, we're going to need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for the specific topics, you'll want to come to the podium. You'll want to state your name, your address. If you're speaking as an individual, you'll have three minutes. If you're speaking as a group, you have five minutes. All questions need to be directed to the council, and we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this annexation and plan of services, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider resolution 20RPS06.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider resolution 20RA06, which is the annexation. Mr. Bombley.
Oh, I have no further presentation.
All right. This is for the annexation.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right. All right, we now need to hold a public hearing for the zoning for approximately .22 acres. Mr. Bombley.
Actually, there is no companion zoning.
Okay. So we don't need to hold a public hearing for the zoning?
That was taken off. I think perhaps, you might have gotten one before it was taken off, but I did talk to Ernest Teague, and she had taken that off.
We're just whittling things away.
Is that because it's a roadway?
That's correct. It's a public right-of-way.
All right, ordinance 20OZ07, to rezone approximately 1.1 acres located at the southeast corner of South Academy Street and East Sevier Street. Mr. Bombley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is for property that Greenhouse Ministries purchased several years ago. It's currently zoned commercial highway located at the southeast corner of East Sevier Street and South Academy Street. It's directly across South Academy Street from property that they already have their existing facilities on, and it's also located within the city core overlay district. Greenhouse approached us about developing the site with a mixed-use development that would accommodate some of their offices on the bottom floor and some other facilities for their, their, their use on the bottom floor, gathering spaces, cafeteria, while not relocating uses from their existing facilities. This is actually a brand-new facility. The second floor of this proposed building would have affordable housing units that, that they would use to house their clientele, and so the property, as I mentioned, is zoned commercial highway. This is a request to zone the property to PUD, Planned Unit District. The Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the property develop as downtown mixed-use central business district. The way that the property is laid out is, is very urban in scale. The building is brought right up to the public right-of-way of South Academy Street to really frame the road with the parking to the side and to the rear of the, of the building. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on February 5th and then unanimously voted to recommend its approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Taylor now, who has a brief presentation he would like to give you.
Thank you, Mr. Bombley. I am Matt Taylor of SCC. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, Mayor, members of the council. I've got with me Mr. Preston Quirk, the architect, so if you've got specific questions about the building itself, he'll be happy to answer those. So as Mr. Bombley said, it's about 1.1 acres in the downtown along the east side of South Academy, just north of State Street, and so Greenhouse has owned this lot for a couple of years now, while they've been operating their existing business to the west. That business will stay after this is constructed and continue to operate in its retail store at that location. Mr. Bombley said it is commercial highway today, and it is planned for the CCO. We have asked for a PUD zoning with this application. This is looking north along Academy, and this is looking east along State Street, and this is looking east along Sevier, which is along the north side of this property. And then these are some of the existing structures around. This is at the southeast corner of our property. This is on the other side of Sevier Street. This is across the street of Academy. This is to the north of us. And this is actually some of the parking lot that Greenhouse uses today. As Mr. Bombley said, our layout, the plan itself, we've brought that building up close to the street, moved all the parking to the rear. We have planned a two-story building at this location. We've got a drop-off to help people get in and out of the weather. We will have a clinician or a nurse come visit a day or two a week, and so that's really what that drop-off is after there. And we also have a dumpster located toward the rear, adjoining the cemetery. We've also planned for a type A buffer with a fence along our southern property line, and that we will be abiding by the downtown shoot-scape plan, so that'll be parallel spaces, own street parking along South Academy, street trees, street lighting, and sidewalks. So we'll improve that storefront, that look along that street greatly. The building itself, as Mr. Bombley said, is very urban, but it also has a residential character because of the surrounding uses and the surrounding architecture, so we've tried to break that up, make it look like multiple buildings while bringing it to the street for that urban feel. So I think Mr. Quirk has done an excellent job with that. It's all brick, stone, some split-face block, and then also a limited amount of cement board toward the tops. We've got two access points. One of those is on Academy, and the other will be on Sevier, so, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to hold a public hearing on this rezoning or request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 20OZ07.
Mayor, I know this project is, is one that Greenhouse Ministries is definitely bringing a quality of life to people who are struggling, and I think the limitation is two years, is that correct, the longest anyone could possibly stay here?
My understanding, it was a little, it was shorter than that, but they definitely have to be part of the program. They have to be working, and so it is not a, a long-term location.
This facility is definitely intended to help get people who are struggling back on their feet and with the ability to manage a budget and, and to hopefully overcome some potential addictions, and, and they're dealing with everything imaginable, but it's, it's a much-needed project, I think, in our city, and I think it'll be a real asset to have this facility there.
Yes, sir. The, the whole floor is really geared toward administering that program. They're going to teach people how to cook, how to manage money. They're going to have other classroom space down there, so some of the life skills that maybe some of the, some of the people have not gotten at an earlier stage in life, they're going to help them, teach them that.
Yeah, it's a good thing. There's no other comments. I move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Bombley, I think you have some public hearings you need to schedule.
I have one to schedule, and we would recommend June 18th for the public hearing. Date for that one item.
Move, we schedule a public hearing for June 18th.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to pull item 18 off for right now. Do we have any statements that need to be paid?
We do not.
Any, I know we have a couple of items of other business. Mr. Huddleston? Or Mr. Gurkey?
................................................................................................................................................